Yeah, because they can avoid that. They can avoid that. Yeah. All the way out the front. You can ask them.
I got plans for the agreements. For sure. 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 Okay, well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the West Goshen Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, November the 2nd, 2023. To start the meeting, will you please stand and join me in the political audience?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be aware this meeting is being livestreamed on the Township YouTube channel and also the meeting may be recorded or audio or video recorded by people present in the room. The first item of business is the opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone attending who would like to raise an issue that is not on the agenda tonight or who has a question or comment for the staff or the board? Yes, sir. As we come to the mic, please state your name.
Good evening, Charles Golden, West Goshen Public Committee. And I thank you for listening to me last week, I believe it was on the 19th, and we're voting at the county services building. So that's not, that's not a bad choice. All right, but tonight, I'd like to share some thoughts with you. I recently listened to a county commissioner who emphasized two responsibilities of local governments. One is fiscal responsibility and the other is safety. With the COVID funds running out, there's going to be some tough spending choices to be made next year. We'll need principal leaders. That was her message. I couldn't agree with it more and it certainly is true with the Board of Supervisors in Westchester, in West Goshen. The oversight of the Board of Supervisors apparently rests on the township citizens. There's no government structure that says the Board of Supervisors can and cannot do that. There's certainly code, but you have no other feedback and so that's why I'm here tonight. Talk about fiscal responsibility. There does not, there does not appear to be anyone qualified on our Board of Supervisors to understand the cradle-to-grave costs of some of the amounts in our budget. Go right to the electric police cars. I believe we talked about the electric maintenance trucks, charging stations, and solar panels. EVs are too impractical for our purpose. There is a new car study done last week, I don't know if you've seen it, which talks about how the industry is taking a turn on their goals for electric vehicles. It's not going to happen. It's not going to happen by 2030. Clutch Schwab's going to be a little upset, but he's going to have to wait. Some of the reasons are the high inflation and the rise in cost of these vehicles and raising electric charging rates. There's lack of parts and there's lack of power in the grid capacity. Move on to maybe more serious subjects. That's fiscal and safety responsibility. The tragedy of Dave Woodward's death is not excusable. At no time in my professional life have I heard of the things that I read in the Daily Local. It's just not handled this way due to the unknown consequences. My experience is any manager would be fired immediately if he treated his employees this way. The township manager and supervisors should have thought of the potential consequences before pulling such a stunt. And one week before the Goshen Fair, you sent home four department managers. That doesn't make sense. That over a long-term issue that should have been understood when you took your supervisory roles, just like the many other issues that you spent time to understand when you took your roles. I consider this a reckless action over what appears to be now all cleared up. Shaun stated in the 9-19 meeting that the board and labor attorneys determined no referrals My personal thoughts as a citizen. I believe Christopher Bayshore and the Board of Supervisors should resign over this tragedy. You appear to have had damaged the township, both in employee safety and financially. There'll be lawyer's fees for defending the township from David Woodward's estate lawsuit and there'll be settlement costs. Why should each of you be given any better consideration by the citizens of this township than the treatment you gave our department managers? That's it. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments, Mr. Golden. I have a couple of responses to that. First, you mentioned about nobody on the board qualified to manage the fiscal responsibility of township. Is that what you said, then?
I don't think anybody on the board is qualified to understand the cradle-to-grave costs of these items that you're proposing.
Well, I completely disagree. In my career, I've managed over $100 million budget, capital program of $30 million annually, and a total employee population of 330 people. So I am eminently qualified to understand these issues. My background is in operations, facilities management, and I was responsible for the installation of the largest solar system in Delaware at the time. So you're completely wrong on that. Secondly, we do make tough spending choices. We look at our budget. We have had a surplus every year for the last three years in our revenues versus our expenses, and we plan to manage our budget for 2024 in an equally fiscally responsible manner. Regarding Mr. Woodward's death, you have repeated to us what you read in a paper based on a claim made against this township. Because of the lawsuit, the board does not intend to provide any detailed public statements about the lawsuit. However, I will say the following. We intend to fully and vigorously defend all parties in this misguided claim against the township, the township manager, and the Board of Supervisors. We will start by seeking a complete dismissal of the meritless case. The fact that this claim references secret squirrel time describing the unauthorized taking of additional paid time off, requiring the illicit submission of falsified work timesheets to payroll administration, I believe speaks volumes about the theft of time that was occurring. The township manager and the board acted completely responsibly and reasonably in our absence to investigate this matter, to understand if other fraudulent practices were occurring, to stop the surreptitious practice, appropriately discipline individuals, and take other steps to resolve the issue. Thankfully, as I have previously stated, the investigation concluded that there wasn't evidence of a financial fraud involving personal monetary gain by employees. Nothing I have just said is intended to diminish the tragedy of Dave's passing and the fact that his wife no longer has a husband and his daughter a father. I know I speak for everyone at the township and the Board of Supervisors when I say that we're all deeply saddened by his death. So that's my response to you, sir. Anyone else with a question or a comment? Very good. We'll move on to the next item of business, gender item number four. Zoning hearing board presentation from the SPCA. Chris.
Mr. Chairman, I will turn this over to Brian Nagel, but I'll just do a brief introduction of the application that's coming before the zoning hearing board. For the board this evening is an application that will be coming before the zoning hearing board for the Brandywine Valley SPCA. The applicant is proposing a redevelopment of the property to update their facility and in order to complete the proposed projects, they're seeking the following relief from the township zoning ordinance. A special exception per section 8412E in order to allow for the renovation, partial removal of existing buildings, and construction of a new building for philanthropic use. Variance relief from section 8454E1 to exceed the 20% maximum impervious coverage in a precautionary steep slope area, and variance relief from section 8454F1 in order to permit construction in a prohibited steep slope area. The application is scheduled to be heard at the November 27 meeting of the zoning hearing board at 7:00 PM, but this project, if, once it goes through the zoning hearing board process, will need to go through the land development process as well. I did ask Brian to take a preliminary look at the proposal because it involved construction in a steep slope area. Brian, I don't believe you, did you have any comments or any thoughts or concerns?
The details of the construction to be worked out through land development, I have no concern with what they're proposing now.
All right, so at that point, I will turn it over to Mr. Nagel, who's representing the applicant.
Good evening. Thank you, Chris. Brian Nagel on behalf of the applicant. Chris did a fairly thorough summary of the application there, so I won't repeat any of that. I will say that the property does currently have a special exception for the philanthropic use that exists there today that was granted by the zoning hearing board in 2011. We've applied for a new, from the same provisions of your code, based on the renovation that's proposed that Mr. Bayshore reviewed for you. I'd like to have Joe Rosella review, give you an overview of the site plan so you can see what's proposed and maybe the best one to put up there, Mr. Kolikowski, would be the rendered site plan, which I think you have, yeah, that one. And so it's fairly straightforward, but essentially what the SPCA, Brandywine Valley SPCA is doing is consolidating some of their satellite locations to this main site. Adam Lamb is with me this evening, CEO of the SPCA. So if you have any specific questions about what they're doing in their programming, he can answer those questions, but initially, I'd like to have Joe Rosella just give you an overview of the plan and also of the variance relief that's being sought.
Thank you and good evening, board members. Joe Rosella with How Engineering, and we prepared the variance plan as well as the rendering that's on the overhead projector. So as you can see, the property is situated, the address being 1212 Phoenixville Pike. We're on the west side of that Phoenixville Pike. To the south of us is the Jehovah Witness facility and currently the site has the existing building, which is in this location, and is referred to on this plan as the clinic building. And this clinic building is being reduced in size and to allow for the construction of the adoption center. The adoption center depicted on this plan, currently there is an existing building that serves administrative purposes and there's also a kennel here, and you'll see that on the existing plans we have. On the far west side and underneath the building is a subsurface garage. And the disturbance of the steep slopes that we're proposing is to allow for this driveway to come in and around to access underneath, to get into the garage. And that's where these steep slopes exist. And they start at the edge of this parking lot and then they go down and up in this area, there's eventually a stream that runs through here. And then further to the west is the Route 100 spur, so there isn't any residential uses behind us. Looking at some historic maps, it was hard for us to determine if when the original building was created here, if some of these steep slopes were made as a result of that construction, but nonetheless, there are steep slopes and in this area they are prohibitive. And then they, as we come around and get closer to the building, they become precautionary. We're disturbing all of the precautionary slopes in this area, which is approximately 4,043 square feet. And then the prohibitive slopes that we're disturbing for the driveway result in 6,274 square feet. And again, the reason for that disturbance is to allow us to get access to the garage And that's the overview of the application on the variance relief that we need for this deep slope disturbance. The remainder of the site, consistent with the zoning requirements, are all compliant in terms of building coverage, green area, indoor green area. Another feature to note on the plan is the construction of a new driveway in a better location at 100 Phoenixville Pike.
Joe, is it also fair to say that the proposal needs all required setbacks?
Yes, it does.
And it's well under the natural block coverage required for the project?
Yes, it is.
Is there any plans for stormwater management engineering on the property?
Yes, there is. And in the area that you can see is green, is a rectangular area. That area will be used for subsurface stormwater management under the ground and on top of it, we would use that as an exercise area for the animals. There is also another subsurface area on the southern portion of the site that will continue to remain in place, and that was a result of some of the improvements from the 2011 development.
And is the impervious area going to be increased at all with the plan?
There is an increase in impervious and we'll use the area, the subsurface area, to manage that as well as some of the new impervious that would be proposed as a result of the improvements in the area of the existing building.
So it becomes like a basin?
Yeah, it will be an underground infiltration basin. We looked at the soils, soil mapping. We didn't do any testing yet, but in our preliminary evaluation, those soils are conducive to support infiltration.
Okay.
We'll have reflections.
I have a couple of questions, Sean. Have you reached out to residents surrounding your property there on that which your proposed plans are?
Yeah, we sent two different notifications. We went further out than the 500 feet, we went all the way down Karen Lane. And so we sent two different letters to them. We've heard from two residents, the one that's directly to the right of us, which is the old home that butts up to our property. They were extremely positive and supportive of the expansion. And then we heard from the far left, right, directly across from the exit drive there, and that person was very positive as well.
Any type of buffers you're going to use on the property?
Did you say buffers?
Buffers, yeah. Those are plans, I guess, for the property.
So on the illustrative plan, what we're proposing is to add more landscaping along in the form of street trees and along Phoenixville Pike. And then we intend to expand upon the buffer that would separate us from the adjoining neighbor on the north side. We've shown that graphically here, but as we would develop our land development plans, we would have a more defined material list and identify the buffer planes that we would be installing.
I have another question here. In our ordinance 84-54 Steep Slope Regulations, it quotes there, what reasonable conditions will the developer include in the plan to further the intent and purpose of the steep slope regulations that we have, namely minimizing soil erosion and runoff and also protecting any residents in the area that might be impacted from this development and to maintain adequate vegetation coverage? We just talked about that. But are there any revisions that you're figuring on in your plan to address any changes in the way in which water's being run off here?
Yes. On the western side where the driveway is, we've taken every measure to do the least amount of disturbance to make that construction where we're minimizing the height of the retaining wall that will then further minimize the disturbance of the steep slopes. Any of the drainage that we're proposing would be directed inwardly onto the pavement, not further onto the steep slopes. So we would be minimizing any erosion or stormwater as a result of those disturbances. And as I mentioned too, we're sensitive to what's behind us, which is the stream, but there aren't any residences that is to the west of us. However, we are taking all the precautions to protect that and we would be doing that through our developer plans.
Assuming everything goes well, what's your timeline here? What kind of, when we look at the start construction, when would you like it done? What are you thinking?
We have volunteers and community members that we have, and our goal would be is within a year of the EWD's approved. We were going to have a silent phase and then more public phase in terms of fundraising. The goal would be to have 50% raise before we break ground. Feel pretty confident that we can be able to do that based on our prior experience with fundraising.
Is there any DEP or any other regulations or requirements in the play area for extra elimination of contamination from, you know, the type of matter from the dogs or, you know, penetrating into the groundwater or soil or?
As far as we know currently, the method that we would be using would be like an AstroTurf over the top that has a protective screening that filters out the urine. Any of the feces would be picked up. And currently there are already yards here, so we're just simply, you know, moving them. They're already over the disturbed ground, but we would be in compliance with the requirements to control that urine and feces.
So the variance that you're seeking for the sloped area is because the impervious surface exceeds the maximum, which is 10%?
That is the one component. The other component is that we're disturbing, if you want to switch the plan, Brian, I think you could maybe see it and see, if you zoom in, you can see the color variation. So.
You're seeing the impervious is allowed within those slopes, not the overall impervious cover on the lot, just what's in those slopes.
Correct. Yeah.
But by how much, I guess, is my question.
Okay, so on these slopes here, which are the precautionary, the ordinance allows you to disturb 20%. We're disturbing 100% because we have building coverage, which is considered impervious, and then the pavement, which is impervious. The steep slopes, the prohibitive steep slopes, where there isn't any disturbance proposed, we're disturbing 6,200 square feet of that with impervious coverage.
What if that is a percentage, Joe?
Yeah. That would be 29%, 29.4% of the prohibitive slopes are being disturbed by the impervious.
And you minimize the grading to the greatest extent possible so that we don't go further than?
That's correct. So this dark line that you see that has curvature is a retaining wall, and that will allow us to minimize disturbance beyond the, into the steep slope area.
So if you weren't building that retaining wall, you would have to grade further into the slopes?
Further into the slopes, yes, and disturb more.
So you designed that specifically to minimize the disturbance in that steep slope to the greatest extent possible?
Yes, and in the disturbance of these steep slopes, we factored in the area that we would need to physically build a wall, which is a little bit beyond the wall for machinery and personnel.
Joe, who owns the parcel behind you? Between your parcel and the bypass? That HOA space?
No, that actually is owned by the, that part of the Jehovah Witness.
Oh, okay. They have a big lot.
It is a very large lot and it goes all the way out to the right away of the 100 spur.
Has anyone spoke to them?
They have not. I mean, they're nationally owned, so we haven't been in actual contact with them. The one time we made contact with them was probably about a year ago when we were trying to purchase stuff around us because we were continuing to expand. They're short-lived and solid neighbors. They're there very, maybe once or twice a week.
So when you go before the zoning hearing board, you're going to have to present a case for hardship. Have you considered other possible arrangements of this plan that would not require you to have to impede into the sloped area?
If you go back to the rendition view, if you rotated it 90 degrees, wouldn't there be an opportunity to access the underground parking from the center of the lot? So rotate the whole thing 90 degrees, avoid the driveway at the back there where the prohibitive slope is? Maybe you might need a variance at the front with a setback, but seems to me it would be an option to orientate it that way.
Won't have as much impervious area in the?
Can you, can you tell me, Joe?
I think maybe from an architectural perspective, maybe better to address it that way.
Sure.
Or would it work, first is the question? Is it possible?
Well, it would require additional retaining walls in the back where we have the kennels. And then we have to find a way to slope down to the existing slope from that kennel to that view. Otherwise, we would end up with a very steep driveway getting down to our garage below the building.
Are we talking about the same change there? Maybe not, so.
If you were to rotate it?
Rotate it and then have the entrance to the garage that's at the back now would be the center of the lot there.
In other words, in other words, you're saying, Shaun, where the driveway comes in from Phoenixville Pike, you're saying, could you put the entrance to the garage on your right as you drive in?
Yes, yeah, just turn this this way.
If you drop it here or something?
Yeah, so the whole block of new construction, turn it 90 degrees, with the bit that's facing the middle now, now face Phoenixville Pike, and where you have the entrance to the garage in the back, it would now be off the center aisle.
Yeah, if we did that, we would have to drive the driveway down very steep from the road, and we didn't want to do that. We wanted to give something that's more connected between the two buildings to allow people to walk. Otherwise, we have to drop that driveway pretty steeply down to get below the building.
But the back there is pretty steep. We just don't want that between the two buildings.
Yeah, it could be a bunch of other elevation. Well, this is what I'm saying. This is going to have to be a narrative, you know, when you talk to the zoning hearing board, is to why this has to be.
So, we will, we will present the hardship case to the zoning hearing board. We understand that we're obligated to minimize the variance relief that we ask for. We get that. That being said, the steep slopes that are on this lot are a unique physical characteristic of this site that we're dealing with. That's one of the reasons why I asked Joe the question about the fact that we're well under the ultimate coverages. We, this development fits within what the ordinance contemplates for a property of this size easily. It's under that mandate. And so, in order to have a layout for functions for the SPCA, and also for the, it's not just the operational people, it's also the customers coming in from the outside, trying to avoid an access drive that's hard to manage. We've got, obviously, concerns with snow and ice, where you have people from the outside, especially employees, coming into the site. So, I think those are fair considerations. We will present that and make sure that the zoning hearing board understands all of those issues that the SPCA is facing with the layout. I mean, your question's a good question.
I mean, there's other variants to my question. I mean, why could you put the new building on the left side of the properties? We're looking at it since you're demolishing some of the existing clinic area.
Yeah, we're happy to, we're happy to look at that. Can we go back to the render? Yeah? I can answer some of that now. One of the parts of our discussion in our design is to keep the SPCA operating while the construction of the new building is going on. They can use the existing building during the construction of the new, and we would demolish the back half of it to complete the parking. So, part of the design approach was to avoid shutting them down for a period of time.
I guess, yeah, no, I understand why you guys want to do it this way. I'm understanding why it's constructed this way. I guess my question is, why do we have, why do we have these ordinances in the first place and these maximums? Like structurally speaking, with the slope, maybe Brian, I don't know if we can answer this, is there some sort of, I don't know, danger into having this much impervious surface on this part of the sloped area?
No. The ordinances are in place to prevent people from, from removing slopes without proper designs and getting permission. They have a proper design, but they're going to be using the retain wall to hold up. If you think about it, the building and the driveway will function as the high side, and they're putting the wall, it doesn't have to go down and take any more slope out below. The slope will be much lower. They're going to sweep around the building and have it in, one in, in and out with their circulation conduits, which I can show you. They have a layout here of that underneath the parking so they can have it.
So, it'll be structurally sound?
Yes, yes. So, this is going to be using this, using the slope as a ramp to get into the, without having to artificially construct a ramp and dig under the building. They're using the natural slopes to get around the building. And aesthetically, it's in the rear instead of in the front, so the front would be more aesthetic facing, and it's in the back where it's not being disturbed.
For a lean open was the biggest obstacle to design and map policy. We provide services in Delaware County, Chester County, 60 municipalities, but we don't have the option unfortunately closing.
A lot of dogs?
Yeah, a lot of dogs, a lot of people's services. So, some of the limitations that we had to work with was just based on that. All of our public services right now are offsite. A half of our administration building is offsite. So, as we've grown with the number of people coming into our community, we've had to go offsite, so we're just really trying to bring, get to one canvas that is able to provide all the services for them, for people that we serve.
Now, you eliminate the Mount Hurricanoe's?
Yeah, so we would, we would, once this building is done, we would be consolidating a bunch of Mount Hurricanoe facilities, which we have a public veterinary hospital for specialty health services, and all those services will be moved into this township.
So, that explains the size of the building that you're proposing here, just to be able to accommodate all of those different functions that are right now scattered all over the place.
Yeah, I think it's about 20, right around about 23,000 to 24,000 square feet, between our three different locations. It would be increasing the overall size, but not drastic differences in 41, I think.
Correct.
So, what have you looked for the board here to do tonight? Is this just to direct our solicitor, whether to oppose this or to be neutral?
Correct.
Well, I'm suggesting that we would be neutral in this.
Okay, one last question for Brian. So, the exception, the request for the, for the precautionary steep slope area impervious coverage and the prohibited steep slope area obstruction, you believe that there is not any issue with those requests?
No, and as Joe did state, they couldn't find his evidence of it, but if you look at the site, the way it's currently built, actually, I think, this is the existing site. You can see how the existing driveway is, and parking, it kind of fits where they may have been constructed, and these slopes may have been a result of the destruction of the existing facilities.
Okay.
I have one more question from a legal perspective. I see that the applicant previously received special exception approval for this whole set of use. Who was that? Is that for all the, the position you're trying to make denied, or was it for a different thing?
No, so, it's essentially what your zoning ordinance requires is you have to have a special exception for the fill-in profit use. This property already has a special exception for the fill-in profit use, but the decision that was rendered by the zoning hearing board in 2011 specifically says, you probably end up doing it anyway, but that decision specifically says, if you're going to modify your use in any way, you have to come by, come back, and get updated approval of your special exception from the zoning hearing board. So, essentially, what we're doing is, if this was a vacant piece of land, we'd be applying for a special exception for the fill-in profit use. The fact of the matter for this site is, it's already operating fill-in profit use has previously been approved by special exception, we're just modifying with the updated approval exception.
Okay, thank you.
Sean, before we go back to your suggestion here for the board to weigh in, just let's see, is anyone attending who has a comment they would like to make on this, this item tonight? Okay, so, John, you're suggesting, what is the board's position?
Yeah, well, I'm suggesting the board, we want to pass a resolution. There's a consensus here that we direct our solicitors just to be neutral in this particular case.
Is there any other board member with a different view than that? No. Okay, so, I'm hearing the board's neutral on the position, and good luck at the zoning hearing board.
We have, we have some elevations that we'll show to the zoning hearing board so they can see what it's going to look like. We can show you those tonight if you'd like to see them, just so you have an idea. That's the, that's the elevation matrix, and then there's another one that's sent you, Brian, that kind of shows more of the street frontage. Yeah, so, I just want the board to have a chance to see those, since we'll be showing those.
So, since you're looking, is that facing Phoenixville Pike or no? Is that facing?
That's standing on Phoenixville Pike, looking to the north and west.
Have an estimated cost for this project?
We haven't gotten that far yet, but we do have some, some rough numbers, and I think they're much lower than mine, so.
That's always the case.
Have you just real quick incorporated the suggestions from, from when you met with Brian and Andrea and I, or have you not gotten that far yet?
No, we have, the ones that we haven't gotten to will be incorporated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
And stick around for the next topic.
Okay, agenda item number five is next, which is discussion and possible approval of the proposed animal protective services agreement between West Ocean Township and the Brandywine Valley SPCA. Chris?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Before the board this evening, as proposed new five-year agreement between West Ocean Township and the Brandywine Valley SPCA. The agreement that is before the board is the agreement that's being sent to all municipalities that the SPCA has provided the service to. The current agreement will expire at the end of 2023. There was a team of municipal managers, including myself, who participated in discussions with the Brandywine Valley SPCA and agreement. The agreement being presented is based on those discussions. I provided a copy of the proposed agreement and an outline from Mr. Land discussing its components. The township solicitors also reviewed the agreement and all changes, which were mostly technical, graphical errors have been addressed. And then, just want to highlight the meeting that we, myself and two of my colleagues had with Adam. I feel it was very productive. The agreement that's being presented to municipalities is a mirror of what they are currently using with their municipalities in Delaware County. We did ask Adam to provide some information because of what I'll say are unfair narratives about the SPCA's operations. Adam was very forthcoming with that information, and I believe that the agreement that's before the board this evening for consideration is just a fair one.
How many municipalities are either renewing at the beginning of the year, is it everyone that we, you provide service to, or is it, are we all on different five-year schedules?
The majority of the Chester County ones are on the same schedule. I think there's only probably about six to seven that are on a separate schedule based on just when they decide to sign with us. So, the majority of them, I think, it would be about 50, 40 to 50 municipalities will be renewed ideally in January.
And what kind of feedback have you had to date from those other municipalities on the agreement?
The managers consortium was great, and Chris was wonderful in terms of those meetings, those conversations. You know, there was an adjustment just based on, we were under a five-year contract, so we couldn't predict what has happened in the last three years in terms of staffing costs and overall cost. So, I think that we kind of made the compromises that we can make in terms of the changes, and I do feel like the majority of them, from what I'm hearing, are signing up. I know that the managers consortium was representing around 30 to 35 of the 50 to 55 that were up.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have some, just kind of clarification, I have this left for me. I know, like, on the first page, it talks about a base rate of $400 per acquired dog and $200 per acquired cat. I guess, I'm just wondering, I don't know what required means, so I don't know if we need a definition here of what required is. I'm assuming anybody that comes, an example from West Ocean Township and drops off the dog astray, not necessarily another?
Correct.
I don't know, I don't know.
So, the townships are only charged for an animal that would be thought as stray or humane law enforcement case. So, anything that comes from your community that would be owner surrender, or any kind of public services that we're providing to you, there is no cost to you. Our donors are paying for those services, whether it be our pet food pantry, whether it be an individual that comes to us that can't afford medical treatment that we provide. So, you're really only being charged for something that your police department would call us to pick up that animal and/or your constituent brought into our facility.
And that's good, but I'm just wondering if we need definition of acquired, just to clarify it?
What's in, it's on page?
I thought there was something that...
Yeah, animal acquisition fee. So, that's...
Oh, is that required?
Yeah, 2A. It's, it's that same language, each acquired dog, each acquired cat. Let's sort of spell it out in more detail, under 2A, animal acquisition fee.
2A, I guess. Oh, okay. Again, I don't know what required is.
You're saying you don't understand the difference between, like, so I know that you guys get some dogs that on planes that come from other places, right? Those come to you from, I mean, a different method than somebody dropping off a dog or a cat, or from within the township versus outside of the township.
The township is brought here. So, the dog or cat originates from a property in West Ocean and is brought to the SPCA, that's what an acquired animal is?
Is that defined in here?
Not to me, it's not clear.
I mean, it's not clear. It's implied, but...
When you've operated this way, right?
We've operated, this contract we have is the same contract we had from the last time. We did make modifications on fee structure and definitions to try to be more transparent. Part of the feedback that we got from Chris and the other townships managed from the consortium was that they needed a better understanding of the different fees and what they included and covered, so we tried to do that comprehensively with the money that we had. It did get renewed by tons of solicitors as well as yours. We did do some modifications based on the solicitor's feedback, which a lot of that was around insurance, indemnifications and stuff, we took out all that stuff. So, we tried to be, you know, a good partner along the way, and Sean's a little modification to make.
I guess the problem I'm having here is, I think it's spelled out for most of them except for and residents. So, I guess, I have a dog, and I can no longer care for the dog, and I bring it to the SPCA versus me finding a dog in West Ocean and bringing it to the SPCA. Does that entail both circumstances? That $400 fee?
To me, no. So, we get, you know, one of the things we provide every township is how, you know, how we got that animal. So, we would only be charging you for anything that's stray, humane law enforcement, or the different areas that are outlined there.
Right.
Any owner surrenders, they're not even, they're not even a part of the building process.
Okay, so I guess that, that needs to be, that's my problem. And residents, what does, what does that mean, residents? You explained it very clearly just now. I understand it.
Yeah, I think that a part of that is the, the residents are the ones that would be calling us for service.
I got the dog. Right, I understand that. I just think please be clarified.
If your solicitor, I mean, we, the challenge is, is that the second version of this agreement has hit all of these municipalities probably on Friday, but if there's something that we can do that your solicitor feels that we can clarify that?
Do we just have to clarify that in order to make a case?
If there's something specific for this township that she...
Because I, I read it to say that I'm a West Ocean Township, I can't take care of my dog, and I'm surrendering it, so that's part of that head of work. It's really not going to appear.
It's not.
Okay.
And we can, we can relook at that if we need to.
Chris, could we just do, do you want to modify the agreement, or do you want to just have a clarifying?
I mean, I think, I think we should change paragraph 2A. That's the problem, that you're not understanding it.
Exactly. I think, yeah, everything else is clear. Police officers, code enforcement, all the other outlined in that definition to me is clear, but maybe it's...
Just eliminate that one phrase, and residents and municipality, would that...
Well, no, because if I, if I find a dog on my street that's stray and I bring it in, they're going to get that fee.
Right.
So, it doesn't matter who finds the animal, if it's within the jurisdiction of West Ocean, whether it's your police officer, whether it's somebody at the township, whether it's me. I mean, I think we just have to tweak that sentence.
Yeah, that's all. Yeah, then I, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, so, is there a board member who would like to propose approval of the animal protective services agreement between the township and the Brandywine Valley SPCA, or is that an additional modification? Okay, John's made the motion to the second. Ash is making the second.
Mr. Chairman, I believe...
I was just going to say, the way, Adam, you can tell me if you're a witness, it would read, so reading 2A, first, says the municipality shall pay the SPCA the sum of $400 for each, instead of saying acquired dog, say stray dog, and 200 for each stray cat or other non-dog domesticated stray species received by the SPCA's officers, the municipality's police officers, code enforcement officers, dog wardens, and residents of the municipality from within the municipality. Does that work?
I think it should.
Okay, you have to read it.
I know there is some other definition language in that in terms of what animals are included in that, but I feel confident that we can work with something that works for the township.
Yeah, I like stray better than acquired, because it's a little bit ambiguous.
Yeah, some animals are not just coming to us to be a stray. So, like, when you go out on a humane law enforcement case and we take and see those animals, they're not going to be just stray.
Stray, yeah, yeah. That's true, that's true.
So, that's where I think there is some definitions that includes what it is, but again, I don't have a, it's probably a...
But in that situation, we wouldn't be charged?
Correct. Yeah, yeah. So, the only thing a township is not charged for is anything resident-owned animals or services that we're providing to your community. Anything that would fall under typical law enforcement, HLE cases, referrals from your, you know, however they come to us, all of those animals, so it's not just a stray dog or stray cat.
So, maybe we just need an exception sentence in here, includes all of this stuff except...
Well, you haven't have to just pre-stray animals, so I feel like we need to be using that definition, so...
I trust that Adam, he probably can work it out.
I do too. I suggest you guys work it out, and we don't get hung up trying to wordsmith it for another 20 minutes.
Right, so that's right.
Okay. So, we've got a motion and a second, with the expectation that that will be resolved between our solicitor and yourself. Is there any other?
Yeah, I don't need one other issue. When we're looking at your fee schedule here under C, we're addressing one and two, 2A. How about the activity fee here? It's a $65 activity fee. Should that be included in this five-year agreement as well?
I believe it, I believe it is. It is, yeah. It is, yeah.
Where is that here? Is it actually spelled out in the, I mean, this is what I'm looking at in this five-year agreement. I don't see the activity fee listed as.
Those are the baselines of-
Yeah, page three, right under this paragraph we're reading, three. Activity fee, municipality and activity fee in the sum of $65.
So, all right, so the entire, this is the entire-
The entire fee.
Nice, okay, gotcha. All right.
Okay. Any other comments from the board on the motion or any questions? Is there any public comment or questions about this agreement or the motion? Very good, then we're ready to take a vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing the motion passes four zero. Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Thank you all for your service and also West Ocean residents.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is item number six, discussion and possible approval of an agreement between the West Town Chase Community Association and West Ocean Township for maintenance of a grass strip portion of Tarver Drive. Chris or Brian?
I'm gonna let Brian just bring it, bring up the area real quick. So Brian, if you could turn on. The area we're talking about is, if I can zoom in. It's a large piece of land, it's 1.2 acres that fronts on Little Shilo Drive. So before the board this evening is a proposed agreement between the township and the West Town Chase Community Association. The township owns the right-of-way on Tarver Drive. As part of the subdivision and development plan that was approved, certain trees were planted in the right-of-way of Tarver Drive. These trees began overgrown and began encroaching on the carway of the street. The streets department completed the removal, the removal then because there was some, I'll say, back and forth about who was, who was ultimately the responsible party for these. We contacted the West Town Chase Community Association, and they've agreed to maintain this grass area as part of general maintenance, general maintenance in the area of the right-of-way. It's intended to memorialize this arrangement, and that is what is before the board this evening. Essentially, they'll know a small section of this right-of-way of Tarver Drive.
Who owns that property now, this lot?
This area, you're talking, Chris, are you talking this area?
It's not the entire thing, it's just that, that one piece right there. Because I, I believe that there was some hostility when the development was built, and someone is refusing to maintain it.
Who owns that property, the township?
The township. The township owns that, we pulled the deeds.
Okay.
The township owns the road.
And be simple, but there was a tree that the person actually, the friends on Little Shilo wanted the township to be responsible for. The township said, we'll take the tree down, but we don't want to then mow this area land.
You've entered Tarver Drive, not on Shilo.
No, I think it was the person on Little Shilo who was up to the back of it.
That's right.
One that started the conversation.
So the street address is Little Shilo, but the back of their property is?
Yes.
Yes, this is the parcel right here that the address that comes off of Shilo.
So the HOA will be cutting township property?
Yes.
Yes. Brian, could you go to Google Maps and just go on Tarver Drive with street view? Because I think it shows what these trees were on that section that I presume have been removed.
They were evergreen trees.
Yeah.
So this is a better, I'm gonna pass this down, this is a better showing of the back of the property where the trees were located that needed to come down.
I'm trying. Zoom in a little bit more, I think. You're getting back to the, they're on the left, right, that's what was in the carway, right there on the left.
Right here.
Okay, so these are gone.
They've gone now?
That is, yeah, the trees are removed.
Okay, so the, this strip of land is the right-of-way there by the, outside the carway is township property. Those trees have been removed.
Yeah.
And so who's gonna mow it, did you say? The HOA?
They go read. It was like, it was like, we'll remove the trees.
What else does the HOA manage in this tree? Is there any other basin or space it's managed?
There's no basin on that side at all. There's, there's four basins within the HOA development. None of them are there. They're managing, well, they have a, their party commit to do the cutting of the areas, the basins, and various common areas, including the monuments, but there's nothing in that area.
But I think they would just add that, I believe, they would just add this to the general maintenance responsibility.
Well, it's not separate, it would become a separate agreement specifically here with the township, right?
Correct.
So are you indemnifying them if anybody gets hurt or anything like that in that property, or how is that working?
We're giving them the right to mow it.
I know, well, we got the right to mow it.
They actually asked for the right to mow it.
So give it, so I don't believe there's any liability that goes with that, correct?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
No, I mean, it's, you want to mow it, it's not, you know, no.
I'm just saying, if somebody gets hurt on that property or something happens, there's not the-
The township already have, yeah, the township already has insurance for that property.
Just like if someone falls-
Like a street.
Like any other property that the township owns.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Roll clear on what it is now. So looking for a motion then to approve the agreement between the West Town Chase Community Association and the township with respect to this maintenance of this grass strip on Tarver Drive that is township property. I will make the motion to approve the agreement. Is there a second? Thank you, Ashley. Is there any comments from the board on this agreement or on the motion? Is there any public comment or questions? Very good, we'll take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did you say?
Yes.
Is there any opposition? Hearing the motion passes four zero.
I don't know if I should have voted in there.
Are you a member of the township?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm a member of the HOA.
Oh, you're a member of the HOA?
Well, yeah, we all are, there are news, right? So I don't know if I should be-
I think it's fine.
You didn't vote against it?
No.
Okay. Next up is agenda item number seven, which is discussion and possible approval of the following items pertaining to the implementation of certain recommendations in the Area Four Cloud Park of the Regional Stormwater Feasibility Study that was done earlier this year. Specifically, there are two items. One is ratification to proceed with the William Wood Company to complete an appraisal of property at 1241 Ashbridge Road. And the second item is proposal from Carol Engineering for the completion of a local share account grant application for the acquisition of property of 1241 Ashbridge Road. With us tonight is Mr. Tippin, welcome. Thank you for being here. So Chris, you just want to give us an update on, I mean, the board's pretty familiar with the work we've been doing around both the feasibility studies that have been completed and then the subsequent work that was done to do further inspections of stormwater systems in the township. But if you could just headline where we were specifically with this particular part of the stormwater system.
Aye, Mr. Chairman. So the items before the board this evening are a ratification of a proposal from the William Wood Company to complete appraisal of the property at 1241 Ashbridge Road. The cost for the appraisal is $500, and the proposal from Carol Engineering Corporation to complete a local share account grant application for the acquisition of the property, with the proposal amount being $3,000. The property at 1241 Ashbridge Road is the house adjacent to Cloud Park that has flooding issues during significant rain events. The township televised the piping recently behind its property and determined that it was not impacted. We did meet with the property owner to discuss the results of the televising and the recommendations for this area outlined in the regional stormwater feasibility study that was completed. And the recommendation of the study was acquisition of certain property in that area. The property owner has indicated an interest in pursuing these options. We did explain to them that grant funding would be necessary due to the anticipated cost. The local share account program would be a viable option to seeking funding for this acquisition. Township can submit multiple applications for consideration. At the last meeting, the board authorized a, another application to this program for a separate project. But acquisition, acquisition is ineligible cost under that program.
Okay. So the reason we, so we wanted that the application deadline is the end of November, correct?
That is correct.
So you had previously solicited because of the need to, you know, that's coming up. So we needed some time here to get an appraisal done, so that's why we emailed, polled the board potentially proceeding with the appraisal, and we want a ratification of that tonight because you got a majority vote in favor of doing the appraisal, correct?
That is correct.
And then the second piece is, it is possible that township staff could prepare the local share account grant application, but given the priorities of the budget, other demands on, on the engineer himself and other staff members, it is better to leverage our professional engineer to complete this potential grant application, given the time constraint that we have, is that correct?
That is correct. Also, they were instrumental in completing the regional study, so they would have the familiarity much better with the recommendation, I believe.
Yeah. So just some thoughts from me. So we did the feasibility study that looked at fourteen or sixteen areas of the township.
Sixteen, Mr. Chairman.
Sixteen areas of the township, including, you know, North Hills, which we already had previously submitted a grant application for an improvement that we expect to hear hopefully next month, because there've been longstanding issues in that area of the township and the, it's on HOA, what's it called, Community Association, come with several requests to consider an improvement that would involve improvements on private property, et cetera, and that that we as a board have approved the submission of the grant for. In the other sixteen areas, I believe this, this particular area was the only one that needed or proposed from our engineer a potential need for acquisition of property to address some of the major issues that we experienced with stormwater floods here. The other areas of the township that we studied did not involve property acquisitions, is that correct?
I believe there would be not property acquisitions to this extent. I think it would be, there would be easements, rights of way, things of that nature.
Yes, okay. This property, 1241 Ashbridge Road, has had in the last few years a consistent history of problems during the large deluges that we've had that have been atypical, we say it, although they're all over the hundred-year rain events that we experienced, that we calculate, but it's been a longstanding issue for the property owner and has addressed this with township staff several times over the years. So this is another area of known problems. It is a natural basin, is that correct, Brian? It's not in a flood zone, it's not a waterway around here, it's not in a hundred-year flood zone or anything like that, but it is a low-lying spot within this overall area of, of the township.
Brian, if you were to drop that little guy on there, would you be able to see the bait line, how it's like a slope?
I'm gonna show you right this way.
The contour on it?
Just wait for it to catch up.
Well, it's catching up. I mean, our, our plan here is having completed this feasibility assessment across all these different areas was to over time look at ways to continue to improve stormwater management across the township through submitting for grants to acquire the money to fund improvements that had not been designed in when these original neighborhoods were built decades ago. That's, that's the conversation we had when we authorized the approval of the study.
And we spent, what, about $140,000 on that? To get all that?
That is correct. To me, this seems consistent with that general philosophy. We are not going to use existing township funds to any degree to acquire the property. We're simply using a small amount of money to, to move forward with the grant application. So just want to put that as a planned way of managing these improvements.
So Ashley, to answer your question, this is the house, the property where Mr. Ryan Hart lives. You can see the concentric circles of contours around that his house is sitting within, and they kind of pushed him out here. This is the low point where my green highlighter is right now. That's the low point where the pipe goes under the railroad tracks. You can see 510, 510, 500, drops, keeps dropping down to where his house is. So this was originally years ago before the subdivision, this area was contemplated as a low area to, as we were regionalized, I'll say quasi-basin, to let enough water go under the railroad tracks. And that basin now has been modified by the house, and the area could be remodified with acquisition to create. Stormwater feature and the design could be in such a way if we get to that point where we can put it in an export project design to help us with the answer.
So that's my question. The overall big picture of what are we going to achieve by doing this, other than obviously solving the problem of the homeowner that's there? How is this going to help the township, like the residents around here, or contribute to R N S four? How's that gonna work?
It can, it will, it will, if we get to the point where we can acquire the property and then move forward with the design project, we can add it to our P R P plan to get an export project for it. Right now, it's not in our plan, so we have to modify the plan, get in the plan, and then put it in.
And are there other areas that we can use to get it in our plan also? As a benefit?
Other areas on this?
Other areas out of the sixteen that we could get the same benefit, both to put it on to a satisfied R N S four or on that?
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
But they're not, I haven't evaluated that to understand if there is, but there is, depending on what type of project you do, you have to do a project that addresses water quality and removes sediment from the water, of course.
I understand that. So we haven't really fully evaluated the picture to see if this is the best location for this and for the grant, to utilize the grant money. And then my second question is, as far as the grant, if we get $500,000 and the assessment comes in at $700,000, who pays the delta? The $200,000? Say we only get grant money of $500,000, but the appraisal comes in at $700,000.
Doesn't it grant? What's the grant?
The cap on the program is $1 million.
Not, that's all I'm saying, we're gonna get $1 million.
I don't think we've decided yet who pays the delta. We don't have any information on that.
Well, we, I think we need to plan for that in the event that that happens.
If we submit the, if we submit this grant application and they do come back and they say, well, we need $500,000, and the appraisal is for $700,000, are we then bound to spend that grant money on, or does it miss? We can unite a grant saying, we don't, we don't want to?
That's my, that's my question.
Yeah, if you don't have-
Yeah.
The township has-
Or could be applied to a different basin?
No, it would be, the application is sub, the application is subject to the project that's submitted, that's submitted. You can make small modifications, but to apply it to a whole different area, I don't believe that that would be feasible. But you could, if you were awarded a lesser sum, you could say, well, thanks, but no thanks, and I know that that, that did occur with another project, but I think that was because of like the declassification, and there was a grant on like basin right where that occurred.
So would this grant, does this grant program? There's a chance that this, that these funds can be used on a rubber project that could still contribute to our R N S four positively, that might not have the risk associated with it of what we're talking about, of the assessment coming in higher than the grant money that we receive.
I don't think you'll be saying.
And then at that point, we'd say, sorry, we can't take the money because we're not going to apply it to this project, and we'd decide on a whole new grant funding for another project that we need. Yes.
Yeah, but you're not in position right now to, to have another project ready to go to fill out a grant application.
And no one else is asking for this to move forward. This is the only real project we have in a deadline of three weeks, four weeks to get a grant in.
Is the offer on the 16th?
No, there is no other project that we have.
We haven't identified another project.
We are, no money.
We haven't gotten, because the local share is just for property acquisition. It's all this grant's for.
Which means we haven't fully done our homework yet, or?
Oh, the grant is only for local property acquisition?
No, no, it's all the applications, all the water projects, what we put in for it. But Tina, the same logic applies to the sidewalk that came in for us. People were interested in getting that sidewalk put in. They were here, they petitioned us, we responded to it with a grant application. We did not say we would build it necessarily, we said we want to go for a grant application. There may be many other spots in the township where sidewalks would be valuable. You just went in front of us, so we said, go ahead. Here we have a chance that we can apply for a grant, require the property, move, start moving forward in the long-term direction of what's needed to resolve some issues in this overall area, and we're ready to go if we move forward with these actions.
This is a lot higher scale cost standpoint.
We're not proposing doing it. Other than $3,500, that's still a risk to us. If we're ever going to address this at some point when we've done some bigger, fuller evaluation, it would still be sitting here with the same, we need to do an appraisal.
I don't agree with that.
It's the first one that's coming for us. I don't see a downside.
Downside is potentially raising the $3,500 for the township, especially if you don't have the grant money. We turn down the grant.
Any grant we do, we're going to have upfront costs of appraisals and designs and everything else from Carol. We're going to put the money in, and we don't get the grant, and then we have to reapply again. It's the same for any grant application. We've got a hassle upfront cost.
This is too much risk. I mean, I...
Oh, that's close. Johnny, haven't seen much.
The scope of services outlined by Carol, that would cover us as far as everything required for submitting a grant?
I did have one question on that because I would feel for up to $1 million for an application, we should include demolition of the property as well. We don't just want to acquire a policy with a house. We want to demolish a house and start moving towards what a basin would look like.
So, that should be included as part of the...
I think so, but I'm looking at Brian.
Do you believe, say, the reason I say yes or maybe depends on the appraisal of the time?
I agree.
So, you can do the appraisal, you don't know how much you have left in that building?
Okay. I think we should ask Carol to estimate the cost of demolition and then decide what we want to do.
Yeah, it's going to be $1,600, it's going to be, I'll tell you right now, it's going to be a lot more than what it was.
That's one.
Disclosing the appraisal.
That's going to be, that's up to the appraisal.
But that should be part of the scope. We should give us an estimate for the demolition.
So, let's just ask a question. I don't see, I think we should ask Carol to just at least estimate the cost. We don't know what we've put in for an application, but we should get a cost for it.
Yeah. So, coupled with the appraisal and the demolition costs, we know what we're talking about.
And then the appraisal, is that going to be based off of the condition of where the house is in the flooding? Or is it going to be a fair market value, or what it would be even if that house had not flooded?
Fair market value.
See, now, who's going to buy the house right now?
It's just going to be a sales comparison.
I don't think that's...
They would have to consider the fact that this has this problem with this test, you know, as part of the fair market value assessment.
Are they going to consider that?
They would have to. They're saying they would.
It's not a factor.
It won't be back to...
So, you're going to be paying for a property what you have to pay.
Because if these people want to level scale, they're going to be...
The township is putting $3,500 out to access the money to acquire a property fair market value, hopefully demolish it and receive with a longer-term plan to put it in engineered stormwater basin for credit for our permit and to enable some of the other activities about additional inlet and replacing pipe to get it here in better ways for them floating in this neighborhood. It's exactly what we spent $140,000 on.
Yeah. We got to take a bite of the apple here, so we're going to start somewhere.
So, just real quick, it's technically $3,600 because of the $100 application.
Thank you for the clarification.
Just to clarify, just making a...
We got all of them on the table. Mr. Reinhardt, would you like to say a few words? If you would, if you could go to the microphone, I'd appreciate it. Just explain some of the history you have with this property and your township engagement that you've had over the recent years.
Absolutely. So, Tim Reinhardt, nice to meet you guys. First time here. We bought the property about five years ago, and within about six months, we had close to eight feet of water outside during one storm event. Now, within about three years, we had four or five occurrences of that. The most destructive one was the hurricane. It wasn't Sandy, it was after Sandy, oh, yeah.
2021?
Which the water got so high, it punched through our windows in the basement and filled up our basement to about the eight-foot line. So, we spent about 15 grand basically ripping out the windows, fortifying it, cinder blocking it in, and with the hope that, all right, I'll keep the water up. This past, I guess it was September, during one of the short rainstorms, it wasn't hurricane, it wasn't a tropical storm, we had the highest water we've had. It completely surrounded the house to the point where we had about two feet of water in our garage this time. So, this isn't something that's going to go away. Previously, I've been in contact with the previous engineer, and he, I have on record didn't tell me that the house shouldn't have been built there. When I asked him, how was it built there? He said, well, we didn't have the process to evaluate the stormwater runoff in 2006. And so, at this point, we've been trying to work with the township. Sean's been great, Chris has been great. So, we're kind of at a place where it's like, all right, we don't want to move. This was our forever house. We have three young kids, two girls that go to Greystone Elementary, and a two-year-old boy. So, we don't want to move. We love this area. Born and raised right off of West Moon Road. My wife was born and raised off of West Market Street. So, but at this point, if we don't do something, it's a safety issue. During the hurricane, we had to pull the kids out of the house, the electrical box was underwater, and it was a real safety issue. So, it was the last time when it came up around the house. So, we're at the point where we want to work with the township to figure out a solution, and if that solution is purchasing our house, that's what we have to do. And based on talking to Chris and everybody, that seems to be the only solution here because we are the low point in that area, but the low point is actually a bigger neighborhood on the other side of the field. So, no matter what we do with the stormwater, it's going to go with somebody else's house, and there's going to be another problem. So, the only option here is to create that basin.
Mr. Reinhardt, when you purchased the property, was there any disclosure of a previous flooding history on the property on our page to you?
Minor flooding issues in the backyard that was resolved by the township by clearing out the drain.
Wednesday this week, you spoke with the property owner in front of you, Mr....
Yes, yesterday. It was yesterday.
Okay. Mr. Vandalisa?
Yes.
And he's been in that property for about, over just about 10 years, he said. He said that until about 2018, yes, there would be six to 12 inches of water kind of in his backyard, but he had never seen anything like he's seen in the last three or four years. So, whether that's related to the sheer scale of deluges we've been experiencing in these hundred-year storms that are happening all the time, whether it's because of changes to people's properties and landscaping and grading causing wall runoff, we don't know. But it just seems to have been property that was okay for about 10 years has now become a real problem in storm, I expect. This is another individual.
I remember the same thing from other neighbors along the outskirts as well.
So, then the other piece to this puzzle is, does the other property owner have an interest in selling?
He would prefer to stay, but if we needed some of his backyard to create a fully engineered basin design, he would be willing to, you know, talk to us about selling that piece of property off. There are concerns about a non-conforming lot that would occur, but there are ways to mitigate that. If we acquire 1241 Ashbridge, we can take some of that driveway there and create a conformable lot. So, it is possible to increase not only the area that would be available to the basin, but improve the overall situation. Brian was just highlighting one of the options.
Yeah, the idea would be to close off this driveway portion here, potentially give that portion to Mr. Vandalisa, and then we would potentially purchase this back portion here to allow us to have this whole area to use. In that way, he was agreeable to pursuing that option.
So, we'd be purchasing some of his land?
Potentially.
Potentially.
I mean, the first step would be, if we move forward with this, we need to have Carol Engineering look at what would be the kind of size of basin that would be needed, and therefore, would it require any additional land other than what we've acquired?
And who would pay for possibly additional land?
We do, maybe another grant application. Like anything, we would apply for another grant that would be to build the basin and acquire the necessary land to do it. The whole plan of the feasibility study was to identify ways that we can improve stormwater management and allow us over many years to access the money through grant applications to affect change.
But the other areas have not been looked at?
Well, we went four more ahead on North Hills. Who said that was the priority?
I think we did prioritize that.
We did prioritize it. They just were here in en masse for several years in a row saying they need to do something, and we took it on board, and that grant application is a match.
And maybe we need to prioritize before we move with any more stormwater engineering.
What does that mean? Prioritize, who decides what the priority is?
I don't know what the standards are, but I think we need to complement an engineering standpoint.
I...
$2,500, I think it's a small amount to invest in order to apply for a grant that may move us well on the road here. Resolve this.
Granted, we may have to turn down. It's not funding.
Chris, do you any feel for how much of these, the grant L S As are funded at 100% versus partially funded?
I can't answer that. I can't answer that question. I've never done one of these applications before, so I'm not too certain. But I'm actually, I know we did, I know that Mr. Craig had looked previously at the sixteen study areas and sort of identified some of the prioritization of them, so I'm seeing if I can locate that.
Yeah.
But the L S As, the grants that we can seek are the small water sewer grant, which probably, I don't know who'd apply to this because that's for, would it apply to stormwater projects, the small water sewer?
I don't know how that, I think you could use that one.
That's the, that's the...
The main one is the water one, right?
Yeah, so you'd be able to use that program. Right, you'd have to use it for matching it, and that program, you'd have to put all of it into that grant.
Yeah, the whole scheme.
Potentially, or I don't know, the L S A being for purchase of acquisition, it's a grant program we can use that for. Buy so a grant, but the grant application has to be contained in the appraisal, has to be in the application.
So, the water, the logic program, the water grant state program, that is not a property acquisition, right?
Because you're going to be doing this part of a stormwater program, I think you can use that as a...
That's only a 50% match. So, imagine the acquisition of the property is $600,000. The engineering design, construction of the basin is $2 million. We'd apply for $2.6 million grant and get 1.3 with us as a 50% match. So, this is the best grant application, just take it in bites, acquire a property, demolish the house, engineer a design, apply for another grant to build the basin. It may take several years.
As far as like, as far as bank for our product goes, as far as P R P credits, and this actually being a worthwhile project, is it?
So, this kind of is the same question that was asked about the government services that are facing. So, a basin that just is a detention basin, it doesn't do anything for water quality, you get about 10% credit for sediment removal for the same program.
And that's what we'd be designing?
Yes, we'd be designing, so we would be able to get credit for the loading of that basin, the drainage area. Those caps haven't been worked out, but if you look at it this way, the detention center basin is about 16,000 pounds credit to our P R P. If we didn't do anything with it, we'd get about 800 pounds of credit.
Just a reminder on these M S four projects, we are going to run out of government-owned property to spend millions of dollars on to get credits. We are going to be going to private property and saying, we need to improve your streambank, or we need you to help us build a basin on your excess land, and we're going to be spending millions of dollars on someone's private property as this program goes on over time, correct?
Yes. There's always so much area.
And you're going to be buying one approach to people that may not want to sell the property.
Yeah. So, I'm going to, Mr. Reinhardt, do you have anything else to add?
I would just say there's a bit, it's not just our property. It's John's property right in front of us that's affected. Across the entrance to the park, the most recent flooding event caused oil to get into the water, which ultimately flowed downstream to the neighborhood below us, and that's what got the D E P involved. There's an additional house right on the other side of them that's affected by it as well. So, it's a total of four properties that are infected. We're the ones that unfortunately are affected the most because our house is basically a boat at that point, but yeah.
I believe that was the flooding event in July when you contacted us.
It was, yeah.
I believe that was it.
Okay, is there any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, I'm going to make a motion to both ratify the proposal from William Wood to proceed with an appraisal of 2041 Ashbridge Road and also to authorize Carol Engineering to complete a local share account grant application for some not to exceed $3,000. Is there a second? Thank you, Ryan. Any more comments or questions on the motion? Is there any public comments or questions on the motion?
Right.
Do you need to have anything in the motion about the application fee or authorize the manager to sign the application?
No, because we're going to get that, we're going to approve it at the next meeting.
Okay.
That'll be the, that'll be the resolution, that's all we need to approve.
Okay, any other questions or comments from anybody? Okay, then we're ready to take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
Yes.
Okay. The motion passes three to one, but Ms. Smith opposed. Thank you. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt, for being here tonight. I appreciate your input. Next on the agenda is item number eight, discussion and possible approval of an update to West Ocean Township's credit card policy. Chris, would you want to remind us what this one's about?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the Board of Supervisors this evening is an update to the Township's corporate credit card policy, which was originally adopted in 2013. Chief Carol had approached me about issuing corporate credit cards to the members of the Police Department Command Staff. The current policy authorizes corporate credit cards to be issued to the township manager, the wastewater superintendent, and the chief of police. The proposed policy before the board would expand the authorization to the other members of the command staff, which are captain and the two lieutenant positions. These would be, speaking with the chief, these would be low-limit credit cards. They would still require all approval of invoices to go through the chief of police and be subject to all authorizations by the Board of Supervisors as part of the bills list.
The command staff often have traveled to national conferences, et cetera, that require hotels, conference fees, et cetera. The current process is inconvenient. They have to incur potentially costs on their own credit cards or whatever, and then secret reimbursement, et cetera.
That is correct.
Any other questions from the board?
Look, yeah, I just do have a question. How come you didn't have the street superintendent included in the list? Some reason for that?
That was...
What do they have need for, or?
I don't believe that they have a need for it. I know Mark ever needs the credit card, he contacts, he contacts me, but I can tell you in two years, or a little over two years, maybe once or twice, he's contacted me for the credit card.
They do buy things like, you know, Home Depot or something like that, okay?
We have, we have cards related to like purchase accounts with Home Depot, Lowe's, things of that nature, so they may utilize those. Those are separate from a T V bank open-ended credit card.
I got you, so, okay.
What is the limit proposed for the credit card?
It may be $2,500.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just have a statement on page, I guess it's form of usage, and again, it's a question from a local perspective. Where, I guess the third paragraph of the book says generally employees should obtain receipts for all expenses. Should we, even though this is related to credit cards, we also include any non-expense charged to the bank credit card and/or any paid cash travel advances attaching to the credit card statement, the type of expenses are for payment. Do we need to incorporate that? Because there could be some cash, there could be some travel advances.
This is specific to credit cards, so no, that would be covered under a general personal policy.
Okay, that's what I wanted, just want to make sure.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I will make the motion then to approve an update to the West Ocean Township's credit card policy to include the command staff for West Ocean P D. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Tina. Is there any public comments or questions on the motion? Okay, ready to take a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes four to zero. Next is the gentle item number nine, discussion about selling surface township vehicles. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, for the Board of Supervisors this evening is consideration to authorize the sale of, I should have updated this memo, three vehicles owned by the, by West Ocean Township. The vehicles being proposed for sale are as follows.
I'm, Mr. Chairman, for the Board of Supervisors this evening is consideration to authorize the sale of, I should have updated this memo, three vehicles owned by the, by West Ocean Township. The vehicles being proposed for sale are as follows. A two thousand and fourteen Escape with an estimated value range of approximately sixty six hundred dollars to ten thousand five hundred dollars, depending on the condition. In speaking with our mechanic, John Waddy, we think that probably about eight to, eight to nine thousand would be probably the range based on our research. The second is the two thousand and sixteen Ford Police Interceptor sedan that was outlined in the two thousand and twenty three budget for sale with an estimated value of five thousand to seven thousand dollars. And then the final vehicle is a two thousand and seventeen Ford Explorer X L T, four wheel drive with an estimated value of seventeen thousand one hundred and eighty nine dollars to twenty two thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. The Interceptor and the two thousand and seventeen Ford Explorer are no longer in use. But while the two thousand and fourteen Ford Escape is still utilized, it does represent an older vehicle in the township's fleet. And the township does have an existing two thousand and nineteen Ford Explorer that would be recirculated as a pool vehicle. If authorized for sale, the vehicles outlined would be placed on munisabid as we've done with recent sales in the past. And then the winning bidders will be brought back to the board for approval once the bidding closes.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions or comments from the board?
I have questions. Are there any other, I'm going to call redundant vehicles or vehicles that are just standing by in case something breaks down or something like that? That could possibly be sold also by the township? How many other vehicles are there out there that might fit that description?
We probably do have some, but I don't want to review that with our street superintendent. He had an idea on what he thinks he would be able to do with the fleet. I also know in giving, in the issues that all of our public works departments have had in acquiring new trucks for replacement, I don't really want to hamper them until they've gotten their new vehicles in. I mean, as we talked about during the capital plan, we do have, we've had issues getting vehicles that we ordered in two thousand and twenty two. But I would like to sit down with Mark and see what he says.
If you would.
Any other questions? Okay, so is the board member willing to make the motion to authorize the sale of the three vehicles?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any public comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just say my claim would be to close the bids around before the first meeting in December to bring the results for the first meeting in December to the board for consideration.
Okay. All right, ready to take a vote? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes four zero. Next is agenda item number ten, discussion regarding the proposed twenty four, twenty twenty four meeting scheduled for the Board of Supervisors. So it looks like Chris had provided the board with a list of proposed schedules that includes the second and the first and third Tuesday of each month, other than January, where we have to have an organizational meeting on the first.
It's generally the first Monday, but, but New Year's Day is the first Monday this year, so it will be on a Tuesday.
There is one exception that needs pointed out, and that is that November the fifth, two thousand and twenty four will be a general election. And that we should consider moving the planned meeting to Thursday, November the seventh. Does the board have any questions?
Well, yeah, there is one question. There is a legislation going through Harrisburg right now that would move the primary up to March nineteenth. Now, if we, right now, it's, it's still April twenty third for the primary, so we would not hit abort meeting on that day. But if they did pass this legislation, what would we have to do in order to cancel and reschedule a meeting?
You would just need to run a legal advertisement stating the new date and time of the meeting.
Okay.
So if you, so if it does end up being on March nineteenth, you said March nineteenth, is that correct? It does end up being March nineteenth, we would pick a new date and then I would run a legal advertisement at the local.
But right now, that's not the date, so we have to go with.
And I apologize, I wasn't aware of that when I was putting this together.
When's it going to be decided, do you know? It's not like for a while, yeah, okay.
You got to check.
It's not like we get asked for that, it's weird and waiting.
I'm not going to wait to decide.
Is there any other holiday issues that you checked with this?
I.
Dr. White is not here tonight. He often asks if we consider the holiday schedule.
I checked all the holiday schedules. I took Dr. White's past request into consideration. I did not find any conflict. I will, before I, I will double check before this, before the advertisement is run, but I did check all the holiday schedules.
We'll go on the fact that you've checked it and we hopefully can authorize this tonight. So I will make the motion to make the proposed list as in the memo, with the exception that November the seventh is the first meeting day in November for our two thousand and twenty four meeting scheduled for the Board of Supervisors. Is there a second?
No, sir.
Thank you, Johnny. Is there any public comments or questions? Very good. We'll take a vote. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes four zero. Next is agenda item number eleven, approval of the minutes from October the third, two thousand and twenty three. Are there any board corrections to the minutes?
I just have one. It's just a minor one. On page one, second paragraph from the bottom there, it said, Ms. Stewart, ask, insert if there has been a change in the individual. Just insert if there, that's all I have.
Is there any other board comments on the minutes? Nope. Okay, then. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes? Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Tina, is there any public comments on the meeting minutes? Very good. We'll take a vote. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the meeting minutes are approved, four zero. Item number twelve, approval of the bills to be paid for the general fund, the sewer revenue fund, the waste and recycling fund, and the capital reserve fund. Does the board have any questions on the bills to be paid?
Yes, I do have one, a couple of questions. I guess I'm just looking at the daily local news. I know I stopped my subscription with the actual paper itself as it came to several thousand dollars a year. But I did switch it up to electronic, which is only fourteen ninety nine a month. So I'm just wondering if the township would consider, or is there some legal reason why we have to have the actual?
Which page do you want?
I'm on Patreon, and the annual bills for the U S meeting, I can't wait to announce this daily local news.
Oh, yeah, seventy dollars?
Yeah, no, I think fourteen ninety nine a month for the electronic. Yeah, rather than.
This is for twenty six weeks for electronic. That is for electronic for twenty six weeks.
Oh, it's twenty six weeks.
Oh, okay.
You don't get a hard copy, right?
No.
No, the township.
We've actually canceled the hard copy, but are still getting it.
Okay, same thing.
We canceled that last year. Yeah, I told our accounts payable part that I only wanted the online access.
Okay, my mistake.
But that's what we're paying, that is what we're paying for. It's for, it's for happier.
Yeah, the other thing I just thought, I know we've got a new map to the police locker room at four thousand dollars. I'm wondering if that's about for the project?
Is that under the capital plan, the capital reserve fund?
Flooring mats and mats.
Is that part of the location project?
But for mats?
It could be just in scriptures.
It's for all the mats in the locker.
On top of the tile.
It's like the flooring.
Oh, no.
It's not flooring, it's mats. It's like mats to protect the flooring.
Yeah, sometimes like a wall.
I would guess, is there floor, do you have mats in the locker room, guys?
No. I think Mike will read it to her.
Maybe they're in the ladies' room?
What's that?
Maybe they're in the ladies'.
How do they know we answered that?
I'll look into it.
Okay. And then I was just wondering what a athlons sportsman membership renewal is.
Which page?
The last entry on the same page, well, they're all on the same page. What is athl, A T H L E N, sportsmen's membership for a hundred and forty dollars?
You would need to speak with Chief Carol about that.
Oh, is that something to do with the police? Do you guys know what that is?
I, I couldn't hear you.
A T A T N, sportsman, membership renewal. Do you know what that is?
Athlons, boys.
It says Boyle, so we need to talk to the chief.
It's her officer, Boyle.
It may be a membership to a, I can't speak a hundred percent, but it might be a membership to a shooting range for if, to practice long distance shooting as a sniper.
Oh, okay.
That would have that good. It might be the athlon, sportsman's club.
That's what it is.
Oh, all right. That's what it is. Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you. Answer my question.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Any other questions on the bills to be paid?
Nope.
Thank you for your questions, Tina. Right, so I'll make the motion to approve the bills for the general fund, the sewer revenue fund, the waste and recycling fund, the capital reserve fund. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any public comments or questions on the bills? Okay, we'll take the vote. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes four zero. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I will second.
Thank you. Call in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
All right.
Give me just a second.
Okay.